One of R.J. concrete. This is a request for rezoning from our four, some of the residents. I too general industrial. New York township petition approximately about half an acre. Service by well and septic. That was published in the Daily Herald of January five. Twenty twenty-two, I have. Objections. Building, oh, they. Patient. You got no objection. Objections, but they also need. Some additional information. From water, no objections, public works. So no jurisdiction. And then. No comments or objections. Outside authorities municipalities or. Some others. Served notice petition. Approximately. The survey is exhibit number. Two dot smart platform survey.
Please start with chairman. This stuff microphone on or? Thank you.
So yeah, well, there's what? You can take your mask off if you'd like to. You're at the microphone. Introduce your witnesses first, will that everybody sworn in at the same do.
The only witness that I will be doing presentation, I got Letitia Veldez here today. Who will? Comment on any questions you may have of the actual production.
All right. Who is she?
Ms. Veldez is one of the owners of R.J. Concrete was also her husband is the other.
Well, could you both be sworn in after you finish your remarks? Treat this as an offer of proof, so you ask her to clarify what. That probably be fine. Great. Thank you.
Whatever you raise.
Bob? Bob?
Yeah.
Could we get the microphones turned up a little bit more? I can hardly hear.
Okay.
Or get, if he could get closer to it. To. I don't know what's up.
That's correct, Barry. I can barely hear either.
It's breaking in and out.
Yeah, that's correct.
I got a tap, but it's a little, even the tap is a little more faint than usual.
You're fine now.
Okay. Good evening again. My name is Michael. Can you call me attorney for Ruben and Letitia Veldez, who are the owners of R.J. concrete? I'll try to keep this succinct to the point.
Would you like me to swear him in first of all?
Yeah. Where you're.
Did you sound like swear a firm testimony about to give this cause not here? It would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you back.
I do.
Thank you.
As I was saying, repeated. I'm Michael Nico. I am attorney for Ruben and Letitia Veldez, who are the owners of R.J. concrete. The property in question is kind of a unique person. The address is seventeen West four seventy-nine. Manor Lane. Half of this property is in Villa Park municipal boundaries. Half of it is in county. Session. Our four. Where is used approximately three quarters of acre M one. It's on West of Villa, north of the current boundary of Villa Park. Just for some very quick background. Villa Park enacted its comprehensive development plan in two thousand nine. And that plan with this property was designated residential and is in the Villa Park comprehensive plan. And it's to be designated as commercial. The plan was annexed and with the intention that all property would be included in the future. Ninety percent of the property surrounding the area of some M one light industrial. And the remaining properties are mixed use of P and D. In a review of the county records, the last twenties years reveal data indicating that over. Properties owners have sought and received some relief to develop the single family residential properties to industrial zone. These properties generally located in western portion of Hill Street and Manor Lane, west of Villa. Have subsequent been annexed into the village of Villa Park. Our zone in the M one light industrial zone district. Going back to twenty eighteen, my client spoke to Pat Gill, director of community development of Villa Park. They were informed that their claim, the city was planning to annex all of this property into the village. And they indicated that the comprehensive plan indicated was to be commercial. As a result of this conversation, my client purchased the property to use as their concrete business. Their business is seasonal because this concrete cannot work to build freezing. And with their business plan, the trucks and equipment is restored at the facility which is to be built. In a basic. Seven. Mondays through Friday. The employees are wired parked a few personal vehicles. They load their trucks and they're going for the day. The trucks leave the facility by six fifteen, six thirty A.M. And go to the site where they're working. The trucks are going to be kept in their warehouse. At this time, they have two six wheeler dump trucks, four four wheeler dump trucks, four F two fifties and four. And they take special pride in making sure all garbage is picked up on Wednesdays. Now, for the development plan, the property itself is commercial in nature per the Route eighty-three corridor plan. Route eighty-three quarter plan. You have to understand, this study is a proactive approach for land use, which has been approved by all of the municipalities in Route eighty-three corridor. Signed off by Hill Park, Lombard, Elmhurst, and the county. And they've agreed as to the future land use, which is commercial. Mrs. Veldez in the quarter approved the currently used plan, and they all have adopted the Route eighty-three quarter plan. R.J.'s request is consistent with the Villa Park comprehensive plan and the county Route eighty-three quarter and land use plan. That encompasses the Villa Park. Main transportation quarter plan, the manufacturing, light industrial warehouse distribution. The property surrounded us is commercial use in the surrounding areas. And this land. In transition. Now, the neighborhood. Indicates that the village map indicates that the property surrounding the approximately twenty-two acres unincorporated area, which is a subdivision. Was. Of, excuse me. On the Hill Street and the Interlink, they're west of Villarreal. Are zoning in the M one light industrial district. On the north side of Manor Lane are vacant lots, single family residence, subject property. Storage facility on the west side. West side of Manor Lane, there's RV construction, instruct plumbing. There is a, the neighbor next door has an irrigation business where his main office is in Aurora, but he keeps trucks on his property. We also have pictures and keeps materials on this property. And then at the corner of the line, Manor Lane is shoulder trucking. The Route eighty plan is looked at must be considered as a holistic plan. It's to ensure consistency between the county and the municipal plans. Recommendations for development. Improving mobility and conduct connectivity of the pedestrian paths and pipe. Explore the green opportunities for regional stormwater and renewable energy. The identified key sites along the corridor based on market assessment and redevelopment factors. Address advantage and regular code enforcement needs and parameters. Today's only relief has been denied when it has been inconsistent with the quarter plan. And relief has been given when it's consistent with Route eighty-three quarter plan. At this time, there are one or more groups putting properties together in this area to change the zoning. I have several people I know. One is Lance Carlos, who is putting. Multiple. Properties together to come in and change because of the use of. As this body knows, there have been other quarter plans that have been very successful. Such as the Swift Road in Anderson. The affiliate real property, it's thriving development now. In this neighborhood, the people are doing businesses out of their house. The neighborhood unfortunately is a mess because of. Enforcement. And the neighbors know the county is not going to exacerbate a neighborhood problem, so they are, county is now using. Their enforcement powers to clean up the area. The plan will increase the property values for the owners. When you have these type of plans that have blown out, and I have represented plans, the property values have gone up significantly for the owners. So R.J.'s plan, they plan to bring in sewer water. I. With a twenty-year recapture. We have plans here, and I did receive a zoning statement from. The health department indicating that you need to expand the. Subject. This won't work, so we made plans to bring down from shoulder trucking all the way to our property. And if you keep going, here is the storage units, which are commercial there. This. This. Sewer water will service the neighborhood as well as the property. Because my client wants to be a good, there is a plan where we have all the setback lines. It's a very modern, nice building. In back of the building, which will be Villa Park section, which is already so M one, will be the warehouse and other. Issues of parking. We have already demolished the house pursuant to negotiations with the building and zoning department. And we want, we want the office building, which will be on the spot facing Manor Lane, to be a. Decent, good looking building that will blend in with the neighborhood. The office building, we'll have a storage facility, parking areas, substantial screening, including fence and trees. And there is little noise or smoke problems with my clients here. Work or anything for any other people who are working there. And as I stated before, rezoning based on historical data increases the value of the surrounding property. One of the questions that has been asked to me was why hasn't Villa Park actually done something? Well, at this time, Villa Park is in the midst of a gigantic downtown renovation, which includes. Commercial, residential, and a tip district. And they are also working on several other tip districts. In addition, the new trustees are trying to catch up with the existing development. And they have, I think it's three or four new trustees, but each of these trustees are unfamiliar with the land use plan that was adopted by. Villa Park and especially Route eighty-three quarter. So we are asking this body to approve a change to. Commercial zoning. And we will abide by all setbacks planes. We're only the building will be one at most, two stories. I think with the piece. And there is nothing that would be out of character in this area. If there's any question, you have to address it.
Okay, let's have your client just validate what you said. Now, the information gave us, this is a straight request for rezoning.
Correct.
So it's not a conditional use. It's a rezoning request. So the information about the operation is instructive to us, but it's not really precisely germane. But nonetheless, we'll ask your client to. Validate that part of your testimony which related to the operations and other things that owner could have matched the background information. I'm sorry about the comprehensive plan.
Can we clarify something before he calls his first witness?
Yeah. Yeah, what do you, what would you like?
Well, on the, the packet that I read that was sent to me, it appeared they were asking for relief on setbacks, and he's saying he doesn't need any.
Well, their publication is for rezoning only. Before we go to that, let's just clean this up and get down.
What we said, we will abide by all setbacks. We are not asking for any changes that are around the property itself. It's just strictly rezoning.
Okay, did you get that?
Okay. Can we, is it, do you see him? A big blown up survey and site plan?
We're having trouble hearing us, but I just want the owner and operator to validate the testimony.
Okay.
Operation.
Sorry. Yes. So, I mean, I'm not sure just what he said.
Let me ask you this. Did you hear the testimony he gave concerning the number of trucks and automatic operated?
Yes.
And the way that you tend to operate?
Yes.
Once again, that is not material to the issue of rezoning or not rezoning, but you agree?
I do.
Good job. You're done. All right. Now I want to clean up the exhibits. I don't know which is which because they're all, I have two twenty eighteen items marked survey. But I don't know what the site plan is, and then I have this. Third item. So could you just tell us who's who here? Let's make exhibit A the current. Well, there is no current survey of the house. Okay, well, then what are these?
This was, this was.
So this is this, this twenty eighteen document is this not current, but it is a survey as of twenty eighteen. No longer have it. It's this.
This was a. This is.
So this will be a site plan?
Yes.
All right. Exhibit B is the site plan. I don't know what you guys, this, this is. Some detail. Except we're going to need objects. All right. Exhibit B is the site plan, and that is this. Plan that says up at the top, subject parcel. And then. All the bottom, this parcel is all M one Villa Park. Then, I don't know. I don't think you have the colored rendition, but that is further detailed site plan.
Okay.
Now, once again, before this proceeds, we're going to need an updated. Site plan. I don't care where the house is or. Hey, that's not because it's just rezoning.
And just rezoning, and like I said, the only thing that would be changed is the house actually going.
Yeah.
So we can update that quickly.
All right. Then you indicated that the. You know, I had questions about rezoning to commercial use on, well, it's something. But you resolved that because, well, I understand incorrectly, you're converting to sewer and public water?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the. Already in place. It has been worked in conjunction. It'll be coming down from. In front of shoulder trucking all the way down the north side of. Manor Lane in front of the property.
The comprehensive plan and the Route eighty-three quarter plan are instructive to us. But they do not precisely conform. To the rezoning standards. I, we have to have information about the trend of development. You indicated that the land, this entire area is in transition.
Yes.
Number one, I'd like you to develop that a little further. I'd like to know whether the property has, or the surrounding properties have had any recent residential development. In other words, did anybody build a residential house on the, on the property next door or whatever? Then I'd like to know something about marketing. Has this property been recently marketed? For use as a residential property?
No.
How long has the owner owned it?
Since twenty eighteen.
But yes. All right. So address the trend of development and any recent residential.
To the best of my knowledge, this is, this is an old, I guess, established community. That, like I say, is in transition. It's being picked off piece by piece. Shoulder trucking. Had the corner of Manor Lane, that was changed from residential to commercial, and they now operate. Net orders, I indicated. On the opposite end of the street. There is a, I get east and west mixed up, so please excuse me. There is a storage facility there. As I also indicated, there have been other. RV construction. There is instruct plumbing, had been doing business. Now, the next door neighbor who's got the irrigation business. He does work parks structure. We have pictures of it, but I, I don't know if he's got employees. And we were willing to purchase the property from him if there was any question. And there was discussions on that capacity. The building itself that we have anticipated would be a office in the front, which would face Manor Lane. And in the back, there'll be some storage, and then the warehouse, which will actually be, the majority of the warehouse will be on Villa Park parcel.
Go to questions from the board for the members present. Do you have any questions about the rezoning? I don't think we need to get into the. When the garbage is picked up and number of trucks, because it's on the street, there's only.
I have some questions.
Mr. Trump? The members present first, and then I'll move to the.
Okay.
Murphy, any questions?
Yeah.
I don't know how we're going to do this, because this thing isn't working very well. How many employees should we have?
About ten. About ten.
In that case, you just move the warehouse to the back part of the property, you don't need. Rezoning. There, there is not enough space to build a office and a warehouse on the north property. Which would be a commercial property. Well, my, if I just take. House here, move it down here, it's gets not a residential anymore. The other property problem going through there is if you, we put everything on the Villa Park property, we have to ingress and egress. Through a residential block. And under the zoning code, that would not be acceptable.
No questions, Carl. So any of the members appearing through Zoom have questions?
Yes, I do.
At the phone, I can't tell.
Dennis has them.
Okay, so. You did say that they're going to bring in sewer and water, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Drainage, because that's near Salt Creek. Am I, is that a flood plain?
No, it's not a flood plain. They have, in the drawings that they have, they have set up for retention, because that's one of the issues. That we have to go through stormwater to get that approved, but there is retention also set up for the property behind the parking lot in the buildings.
Okay, and then Barry did mention something, and he's right. If you look at page two of the petition. We've got here bulk, general bulk requirement, sixty feet on the front, sixty feet on the side. And twenty feet in the rear, and you've got proposed at forty-five feet, twenty-nine point five seven, and thirty point one eight.
If that's withdrawn or inapplicable, not a footprint or a site plan, we're approving rezoning or no rezoning. So we're not getting relief. Concerning setbacks if this rezoning is.
Okay.
This man, I agree with Ling, let me, we're in our. But I agree wholeheartedly, as usual. The premise of your remark, Barry, was right, as always. All right, Mr. Ketter, do you have any questions?
No.
And Miss Anderson is not on board? Okay. That concludes the questions from the board. I'll take questions or comments from the audience. Each and every speaker once. There's a little time limit on. Your remarks. I want to know who in the audience would like to make a statement. This is kind of. First of all, last call, same time. Raise your hand if you want to make a statement. I see one, two, three, four people with statements. If you stand and be sworn in by reporter.
Raise your hand, please. You just sound like swear a firm, the testimony about to give this cause not hearing, it would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so. Yes.
Yeah, I can move. The four of you sort of queue up with all the social, the same protocol that's. And then the speaker go to the microphone. When you begin your remarks, please follow the following sort of protocol. First, state your name, spell your name. For reporter. Tell us your address and tell us where you live. In relation to this property, because the address may or may not mean anything. If you're ten miles away or one house away, that makes a difference. Then tell us, I oppose. I support, or I'm neutral, and I want to just make a valid part. Then. Remember what your position is. In a word or two, word or two. Give us the sort of the. Chapter heading of your statement, and then you can go on. Reason we like to do that is that we need to know what to listen for in your remarks, the thrust of your remarks. So. Let's say, a lot of, I'm not saying that's an issue here, but if your concern is traffic. Then we know what to listen for in your remarks. So go ahead. Sir, can you be first? And I know the first guy always.
What was it?
Resolve that to me, sir.
My name is James Smithson.
Right.
Seventeen W five thirty Manor Lane.
Spell your name.
James J.A.M.B.S. Smithson, S.M.I.T.H.S. one.
Sir. How close are you?
I'll be two laps. To the west and the north.
Okay. It's about your position.
My position is I oppose thoroughly.
Okay, that was fine.
He's been running an operation for four years. Same location. It's three one eighteen. I call the Brooklyn zoning of the county. The village also. Nobody wants to enforce it. You guys came out with five ton weight limits. On both ends of the manner. You guys came out, put five ton weight limits on both ends of the manor, on the west side and the east side, it's one block road. He's ran for four years out of this site. Domoed the house, proceeded Villa Park, called them no. You guys have, have ticketed him, tagged and violated him, and here we are, four years later, and still doing the same thing. I've been there sixteen years, paid my taxes, uh, got one of the nicer houses on the block. Uh, he's destroyed the neighborhood in a row. Um, it's a residential, one block area, all houses. Uh, it's ridiculous with Steven Haven, and with the combination between Villa Park and, and DuPage County, nobody will enforce it. I happened to work for a construction company for twenty-three years. Things do not start in the morning at five forty-five AM in a residential area. He has no concern for us, as people paying taxes for sixteen years in the same house. He bought the house, the domoed the house, it was condemned, uninhabitable. So this was the projection from the get-go. And you guys, and not, not you guys personally, but the Page County will not enforce what they've written as law. Five ton weight limit residential area, it's pretty, pretty clear. And none of his trucks are hired, Carl.
Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll get, uh, summary comments and address these things as the petition.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure, thank you.
Who's next?
My name, my name is Porfirio Mendez. I live at seventeen West five hundred and five Manor Lane.
Can you spell your first name?
My first name is P O R F I R I O M N E C. I oppose, I'm against that. Uh, I bought the house, I fixed him up, I got permits for it, but I'm siding, I'm perming, I'm perming driveway, brick driveway, because it was so gravel. My neighbor, uh, house, like, the west, uh, they, they, this, uh, house, that they remodulate right now, that they bought, and they're in my, so, uh, a little house, but it's remodulated right now, as we speak. I have a business right here, in my business, Art in Aurora, four thousand square feet, the right location, it's commercial, not a residential, I got very much business. Yes, I have a van in there, they sometimes I drive to there, it's like normal, they have, uh, cars, they drove to their house, because I need to go work that, to make a business. I have only one that, if any of my neighbors will call that I gotta move my van, I will move my van. You guys, I do not bring my business from there, I swear to God. My business operating from, uh, on, on Hill Avenue, six or five Hill Avenue in the road. If they say operating from there, they are lying. If you swear to God, they do not lie, they are lying. So I'm not operating from there, I just have a van there, yes, because I drive it, I get somebody to try my high school, they work, it's a real bother. So my main business is in Aurora. These guys, they try to find my property, I say, no, I'm not selling my property. I was cleaning my, my, the street, because I was doing my driveway, the, the truck for his company came by, literally six inches away from the goal. I told the chair of the department, they came, they say, but in point, they drive it, I couldn't, because his, the truck's too big. I called the owner, Ruben, I mean, I don't know if he's the owner now, she's the wife, she said everything in her name. But I called him, I called my neighbor to apologize. I'm running my business, if one of my workers will, tell a complaint, have you raised somebody that was, I will step up, and I was calling, I'm sorry, I will talk to my worker, what I did, that I, hey, you, drunk by you. Are you a CEO or something, I mean, you have a big truck, you can kill somebody, little. He never apologized to me, so we have a comment. Yes, because I'm very angry right now. I called him, what's going on with you? Why are you trying to run me over? Why are you telling your workers? You have to tell your workers something about me, because I didn't sold you my house, and you piss on me, because you cannot run the business anymore. I don't understand that. I mean, I know what a nation is. I asked for a city Aurora, before I did that, I did the drawings completely, how that building's gonna look, right here. It's just right here, my building, if I ask for a city Aurora.
Can you refer to that document? It's not necessary that you give that as an exhibit, but...
I'm just, I'm just, just an example, you know? So what I'm trying to say is that they're just trying to stay there, running their business as long as they can without contaminating it. Look, look to that, we have a nightmare living in there. It's true.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good grief.
My name's Tammy Schmidt, T A M M Y, S C H M I D T. I live at seventeen W four four five Manor. I am one house away, uh, there's a house in between us. In two thousand nine, the comprehensive plan was changed for our area, because a super Walmart was gonna buy us all out, and that's why the comprehensive plan was opposed. And we were given contracts, and when the economy crashed, and we were told that the Walmart deal had backed down. We've been to the village twice already, they've been denied, I have the paper and notes from it. They were denied to incorporate the business in, um, because of it being a spot zoning, that they would be the only business on our block running, um, these trucks. I have pictures of the signs, um, no trucks allowed. The sheriff came out, they told us that they would only exit one and not come by our houses, I have pictures that they have. They were, they kicked the property, the business is starting to decay, we've been told not to run the business. Also, Schroeder Company is not a part of the village, that has always been a village, I mean, it is always been a village company, it was never incorporated in. I've been at this resident since two thousand three. Um, the, the property used to be an old lumberyard. Then, uh, uh, business people bought it out, and they rent to Schroeder Trucking, which is part of the village. The same company bought the two lots next to me and knocked down the houses, also wanting to get it rezoned commercial, and they also have been denied, because it's still a residential area. So I oppose this, and he is wrong about Schroeder being a part that was incorporated in, because that property has always been village property. I have the proofs to give you over minutes, that they've been denied by the village, and I also have pictures if you would like to look at them.
Uh, it's up to you what exhibits you'll offer. The question of the past actions of Villa Park are not in dispute, so, I don't know.
Well, they tried to get the property already rezoned.
That, it's not in dispute what Villa Park did, and it's a matter of public record, so it's not necessary for us to kick that exhibit. If you want to offer it, set it up, um, park it as your, as number one neighbor. Want to get those photos? What are the floors, talking about trucks driving on the street?
There's a fifty, there's no trucks allowed on our street.
Yeah, okay.
So we were called the police, and the police, they told the police that they were allowed there per the village. So then the DuPage County would not do anything against this company.
Look, um, if you want to make those, uh, exhibit, then they'll accept it, because we know, I, exhibits, but I don't see how they relate to the issue of whether or not this will be a result. It's up to you. If you do, this, uh, can, this, maybe, yeah, by the street, okay?
Okay, in rezoning.
Right.
Well, I oppose it.
Yeah.
And they have not been good neighbors.
No.
They bullied us the whole time they've been there.
All right, thank you. And then the final speaker?
Good evening, my name is Barbara, the own house, I live next door to the gentleman, that seventeen W four six one Manor Lane.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Right, Barbara, B A R, B A R A, the own house, T as in Tom, H I, E L E N, H O U S E. I have so much to say, of course, I completely oppose this. There was a study done, which I don't see anything about. The gentleman came out to see if he would flood me out if he built. And he was standing against my house, and he looked across the property, and he seen, he said, if he builds anything, there's gonna flood you. So, I haven't seen any information about that anywhere, so that's been buried, clearly. Uh, but he did have, there was a study done. Um, I need my glasses for the study. Never mind, okay.
So that's in the province of the Stormwater Department, and all the, all they have, so far as they need official information.
Yeah, actually, I talked with the gentleman that was there, he's like, he had his, uh, like a telescope thing that he was looking through, and he said, anything he builds here is gonna flood you out, which it will. Um, secondly, I own four feet thirteen inches past my fence. This man has been piling garbage out, I have police reports against my fence, he's damaged my fence like four different times. I can't paint it, I can't pull weeds on that side, right now he has a, a temporary fence jammed up against my fence. So he's not a good neighbor, I have pictures of all kinds of garbage, I could give you pictures and pictures and pictures. He is not a good neighbor, he's got, I mean, the storage is gonna be garbage, he starts early in the morning, just, his employees are banging and spraying, his trucks are out there running, the fumes are blowing through our yards, I can't even sit outside in the summer and have a cup of coffee, because in the morning, the yards are full of fumes from his trucks. Um, he doesn't belong there, I'm a residential, this is in the middle of a residential block. This is my retirement, and I should not lose the value of my home, because somebody got a great deal on some condemned property. Um, I went to the village today, they have declined letting him become part of Villa Park. He recently went in there to try to do that, and they declined it. Whether it's in disarray or not, doesn't really matter, because we've been to many meetings about this in Villa Park. Um, you know, it's, it's, there's plenty of trucks going up and down our street, big ass trucks with blood coming out their wheels and stuff. The first thing he did when he moved in there is fill the whole backyard with rock, and he crushed his septic field. Did he drain the septic field first? No. So that, that land is contaminated. Secondly, the next thing he did is tried to find out information about my septic field, calling the same septic company that I use. They recognized him on the caller ID right away. He claimed he was a, uh, inspector, he wanted to know about my septic field, which these people replaced my whole septic field, so what's it for? He's a problem, you know? He's not a good neighbor, um, all kinds of noise, they, they just filled up neighborhood with fumes. I mean, it's been nothing short of behind us, which was the way to go on to put the trees up, that they were supposed to put up the arbor of trees, whole nother story. But I don't need this right next to my house, it's in the middle of a residential block. And I paid my taxes since two thousand four, or the year after Tammy. And when we were in there, they had a, a nice wood company behind us, wasn't a problem, this is becoming a real problem. And, and she's absolutely right, the big development that was supposed to happen was because they were buying the whole neighborhood and doing a super Walmart, and then it ended up falling through. But that was the only reason for the redevelopment. And all of these businesses, equips, are mixed in there. This gentleman here, it's like a little tiny work, it's not a truck, it's not a dump truck, it's a little work yard, and it's hardly over there, once in a while it's there. It's not an issue, it's a man. These big companies all around that are operating in the residential area does not exist. At the end of our blocks, there is some, um, industrial stuff down there, they go out under hard work, they don't even come directly from it, they're not allowed. We have signs, no trucks allowed. Only one breaking these rules is him. So, uh, and, and, you know, as far as, I mean, abutment on a residential area, he would have to be fifty feet up high property, fifty feet up higher than neighbor's property. His lot's only a hundred and twenty feet wide, so what's he gonna have, a twenty foot building? You know? And currently, he's got all this crap piled on my property. We have this argument about the fence constantly, the constant damage to our fences, guys have no respect. They threw tires up against my fence, cracked the fence, I mean, they have no respect, they don't care. I have pictures of piles of garbage, I can prove what I'm saying, they can't prove that basically garbage out, that's a bunch of law. So I completely oppose it, and is there anything else I would like to cover? Um, again, I went into Villa Park, they've been asked to rezon the Villa Park, and Villa Park is declining, I'm very tired. And they did decline, uh, yeah, because it was considered residential, and it was not rezoned to industrial. It was, uh, they can build townhouses on it or whatever, but they cannot build anything.
Can you, uh, explain what you mean?
Oh, yes, there was a new house built.
Right on Villa.
On Villa, so, yeah, they did open a new house, so there is new, um, residential ground in that area, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more, uh, any responses on the closing statement? Then just, um, can we get a little background, a summary background of Villa Park, having faced some professional... All right.
I can leave this to the Villa Park, there was a petition for a X, so they could do it, they denied it right at the time of the, the new, uh, downtown decision. Again, they, there, there was a breach between the trustees, three of, that's new ones, that understand it, and they did not approve it at that time. When was that? Uh, would be last year, approximately, June, July. Uh, we have tried to follow the rules, we thought it'd be easier to go into the park, since a good, over two thirds of the property is already in Villa Park. Uh, when they say that spot zoning, there has been no denial for spot zoning in that area. I think the testimony of all these people indicate, yes, this property is going commercial, that's why it's in the comprehensive plan, that's why it's in the eighty-three corridor. And these people, and I just finished one up on, in Wooddale, and my client got three times the amount of, uh, value of their property when they purchased the property. I mean, people don't realize when you have these big purchases, like last, the last I heard, Lance Thomas had six or seven, uh, of these properties that he was working on, more because he contacted, uh, us, which are cool. This whole property is changing, it's changing because it's gonna be commercial. Is it today, tomorrow? It's already started with the, the various people who have already had a change. It's on the periphery, this is on the periphery, because we back up to the village. We are not trying to make these people's lives miserable. I'm sorry, you know, but, you know, it, you know, we will, we have even agreed on the traffic, if it's a one way in, one way out, we will abide by that. You know, that, that's, that's one of the things, this will bring enforcement for everybody. But we have to have, uh, to do the construction, we have to have this lot changed to, uh, commercial, so we can do the ingress and egress properly, to comply with all the building and zoning statutes.
Good day.
I have, and some of the, the pictures, I have pictures here, I can go through these and rebut, but that's not the point. The point here really is changing neighborhood. The area here is being and will be rezoned commercial in the future. That's why you have these comprehensive plans, that's why now that the, uh, adjudication court has been taking and working to try to clean up the properties. I mean, when we have pictures of coming trucks and all kinds of trucks, they're trying to get it completed. That's why we took the house down, because that was what we promised the county to, what we have done, we have promised it, that we're bringing in water, and we're bringing in value to the properties of the people. And we are just asking, just for rezoning of the property, so we can put a building that's commensurate with the area. I've done this a lot of times in a lot of neighborhoods, I've had houses next door and small buildings, this is not gonna be a monster. You know, it's not gonna be out of the complex, but that's, it's proper use of the land, that's why we're asking for the rezoning to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There is one, I'm... All right, thank you, there is one unresolved item, and that is that, uh, some reference to stormwater issues, flooding. We don't have any comments from the stormwater department, do you? I don't imagine you've worked with stormwater as yet, but if you work with them, uh, see if you get some sort of.
Oh, absolutely, I'll be happy.
Blessing that far order.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, I'll be happy to work with, uh, I've worked with the building and zoning on this already. And that, uh, that for Mr. Haas, and we've had numerous conversations. So we will work with, uh, everything is subject to, uh, stormwater, giving the approval on the plan.
If we get some sort of preliminary letter from the.
I'll be happy to try to get that.
All right, and then, uh, next step in the process is to, uh. Well, we'll hold the record open to get the information from the stormwater department, depending on the follow-up information that I requested. But, uh, public hearing of this matter is concluded as of this evening.
Well, could I ask one thing?
Sure.
It, it, it appears since I got my packet and the presentation tonight, that the sewer, a septic is not gonna be under the parking lot because he's going to sewer water. But I don't know what the condition of the septic field is, and if the county has examined it, and if anything needs to be done, if it needs to be drained, capped, whatever, I think we should get a report on that.
The, what you're talking about, the septic field is actually on the commercial lot in Villa Park. It's outside, yeah.
How far along are you with public works?
Uh, people on the engineering drawings have been working for the last year, about eighteen months, year eighteen months with them. To get all the, Schroeder Trucking is also working with us on that.
All right, we'll consider whether we can add a condition. That sewer water.
Uh, we, we have no, we cannot build without sewer waters, we have no problem making that in condition.
Physical, in those conditions of.
Yeah, it's, like I say, the sewer water will come in through the lot and then go back, so yes.
So we'll, uh, next consider this matter at the recommendation session of the, of this board. Art, what's the March date?
March third.
March third, at five thirty, we need in this room to deliberate about this case and make a decision. That will constitute our recommendation to the county development committee, here's the matter. Later in March, they will make a similar recommendation. Following their hearing, uh, to the full county board, all of that should occur by the end of March, do you have the March dates?
Mr. German?
Yeah, hold on one second. What are the March dates?
So if it was recommendation on March third, it would go to the March fifteenth Development Committee, and then March twenty-second County Board.
March fifteen is the Development Committee, that's an open hearing that is sometime in the morning. March twenty-four?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second is County Board. All right, Mr. Miranda, you want?
Yeah, I kind of, um, what Barry had mentioned, it's not a bad idea, they should, we should get verification that. I'm sure the septic field was collapsed or whatever, but the, 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 the old well, we should verify, they should verify that it was. Um, disposed of correctly, because they're supposed to cap it and concrete it, I think, if I remember correctly.
They hook up to sewer and water.
Yes, the old well.
Right, you have to do that, you hook up the sewer and water. So that's a public works issue and.
Okay.
I just wasn't cleared it, and I apologize, because I didn't know why the county was weighing in if it was in Villa Park. The county was concerned about it, and I assumed that was on the property, it was within the county, it's kind of a muddled situation for me.
It's confusing because the house was on the lot in DuPage County. And so I'm guessing the well was also on the lot in DuPage County, but they tore it down.
Hey, that's, that's, uh, concludes the hearing for this.
Get any say on the next one meeting?
Uh, there's a question from the audience about participation in the development committee, we the development committee?
You said, you said there was two more meetings, that's what I'm asking about fifteen.
We meet for our recommendation meeting on the date that I indicated, that is, that is, welcome to attend, you may not participate, this is the public hearing. Whether or not the development committee will take public comment is up to the development committee, I'm sure they're all county board members. You might contact the county board. No, I can't take any more comments, or, no, it doesn't have, because I'm. I just gave you the dates, that's.
I didn't, you just said the meeting was, I didn't get the second date, that's what I'm asking initially. March third, March fifteenth, March twenty-second.
There we go. Thank you, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't hear me, I think I said it three times, and maybe it's the microphone. Okay, thank you.